Board of County Commissioners, now in session. We'll begin with prayer followed by the pledge. Mr. Jones, you lead some prayer, please.
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day that you have given us. God, we thank you for this life that we enjoy that you have freely given to us today. Father, we ask that you would help us today as a government body, a decision-making body, God, to have not only knowledge but wisdom and discretion, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the power for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be approval of a minute.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be payment of the bills.
Some move?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be public comment. State your name. Raise your hand, be recognized. State your name for the record.
Commissioner, if I may, before we go to public comments, I want to remind the public in general that in the back of the room, there are two binders back there. That is the complete agenda packet. If you need copies of anything in there, walk next door, Suite 1. Cheyenne and Cheryl will be happy to make copies of it for you. I left copies of my report of the planning and zoning meeting, and maybe one more document back there that's available for everybody already outside of that binder. Thank you, sir.
Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alan Pfeifer, concerned citizens of Franklin County. I wanted to continue to bang the drum on the idea of asking finance for potential budget savings so that we can go back to rollback rate. I have created some information that I think you have in front of you. Michael was kind enough to make some copies this morning. When we go to a budget, when we have our budget workshop, we only talk about the mileage rate as far as that is concerned. But the county has vast other sources of income. What I put down here for you is that we have approximately $3 million in additional sources of income through various grants, permits, revenue sharing, you name it. We also have cash carry forward and other reserves totaling approximately $6 million. We're looking for less than $400,000 worth of savings. And I understand that under state law, we're only allowed to have a maximum of 10 percent. Let me read this to you. "The reserve for contingencies shall be budgeted at a minimum of 5 percent of operating expenditures. The total amount shall not exceed the statutory maximum of 10 percent of operating expenditures." Now, I'm not exactly sure what operating expenditures entails, but what I try to figure out is that operating expenditures probably are around $16 million. They could be as high as $18 million, which would mean the maximum should be somewhere between $3 and $3.6 million that we could have in reserves versus a figure that's much higher that I calculated, again, without some of the knowledge that Aaron has and others. But ad valorem taxes only scratch the surface of the available monies available to the county. There is, all these numbers came from the proposed county budget. None of these are hypothesized or estimates. They all come from information supplied to us by the county. And I want to just once again reiterate my request that before we go to the first budget adoption hearing, that we try to seek the savings necessary to go to the rollback rate so we don't increase the taxes of individuals in the county for the fourth straight year in a row. I've been receiving calls from across the county ever since the trim notices have come out, some people saying they've got 15, 20 percent increases, some 2 percent, some 3 percent. But there's very, very substantial increases in taxes for at least some of the citizens of Franklin County, or most of the citizens of Franklin County. And I'd ask you to take a look at this. There seems to be no downside to asking finance to look at some of these numbers and make sure that we're not over-reserving, number one, and two, that we're also in the position of perhaps finding some savings. There's a lot of money that comes back at the end of the year. I do appreciate you listening this morning, and perhaps we can have some action. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Any other public comment that says a public comment period? There being no further public comment? Howard Neighbors, Superintendent of Public Works, next on the agenda.
Board of Commissioners, how y'all doing? We continue on cutting grass through the county. Some places are very high. We in Carabelle right now, and we'll be in Landark in Alligator Point. And we've got some more stuff on some roads we got. We're doing DOT reporting on our roads and stuff, and we got about six roads in Carabelle which we don't know if county or city. City says it's theirs, county says it's theirs, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Get up with Michael Schuler, let him see who owns the roads there.
Okay.
I know going down the Mill Road, they say the county owns the east side, and then the city owns the west side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The West Airport Road, Timber Island Road, which I know we maintained years, the city says it's theirs, so.
Right.
Um, Mr. Chairman? I agree with Commissioner Massey. I've been sitting up here a long time, and we've been maintaining them roads for a long time, and now all of a sudden the city of Carabelle wants to claim them. I don't know if they want to get points for grants or what it is, but I can tell you that the majority of those roads have had in the past 20 years a lot of land that has been annexed into the city. It was county land, and it's been annexed into the city, and I don't think the roads, I don't think those roads have ever been annexed. So, I would like for clarification of it, too, Commissioner Massey, so, and have the attorney and Mark Carrington and Howard get together, and let's figure out them roads and see what we can do. Because if we've been maintaining those roads for 20 years, and it's been the city of Carabelle's supposed to have been doing it, you know, I mean, I've never heard of it.
Mr. Chairman, may I request board action to direct me to do this?
Some move?
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners.
And then I got a Mr. Stewart on Ryan Drive, which is, I guess, bought property in there on the east side on Ryan Drive. Ryan Drive ain't got no address or nothing, but he gonna build a house in there, and they wanting to put a concrete slab to the edge of the pavement into where his house is gonna be, so.
There's a walk path there.
They're gonna have to go to that walk path and also put a pipe in. I said it had the engineer and stuff look at it, so.
Commissioners, I think that would come under the purview of the umbrella of what the board just directed me to look at. So, my request is that y'all hold off on taking action on this matter until I can return to the board with advice and have action by the board.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got something. Howard Neighbors, please. Mr. Howard?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a Mr. Ben Wilkinson down there on Bayfront Drive in Alligator Point. Bayfront comes off the carousel and loops around and goes through to Seashell, and Cypress comes off of it. I want to direct you and Michael Marone to get together and, with the expertise of Mark Carrington, and see if he's wanting to abandon, us to abandon a portion of that road. I want to see if, and the attorney, add the attorney to it. He just gave me the eye. Add his attorney to it, and see if we need to abandon that road. It's one of the roads that goes back to 2370, Alligator Drive, and I'm kinda concerned with it.
It makes that loop when it comes back out.
It makes that loop in there.
Why would it want to close it?
That's what I'm saying. I want y'all to look at it.
Okay.
Because he's made a request to me as a commissioner, and I don't do nothing without y'all's recommendation.
Well, I know we've maintained that for years and years, and we just made, somebody had that privacy fence up.
Mr. Singleton.
Which we just had to take up last year, so.
Yeah. So, go ahead and just look at it and come back at the next meeting with y'all's recommendation on whether we need to abandon that or not. I don't do it without the expertise.
Anything, any other Commissioners have anything for Mr. Neighbors?
I got something, I see him. Oh, Mr. Schuler, did you get up with, I asked y'all about the Iron Fellow, last meeting?
Commissioner, I will apologize first. I hate to lead off with an apology, but I have not yet looked at that issue. There's been so many other things going on, but I will definitely look at that and follow up with you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments for Mr. Neighbors? Thank you, Howard. Next will be Mr. Fonda Davis, I'll have ways to record.
Good morning, Commissioners. For my report, recycling site here in Appalachia, there's drawn some concerns where it's been a lot of illegal dumping going on. Just need to know what direction you all want to move in as far as closing or keeping it going.
Fonda, this has been an ongoing issue for a number of years. It's something that just popped up yesterday.
That's right.
If I recall correctly, it's been continuously, there's a dumpster down there. Somebody has a dumpster there beside the recycling?
Yes. My understanding from the city is it's dumpster for the businesses downtown here. They don't have a place to put the dumpster, so they allowing them to put it there.
Well, I think that's leading to a lot of illegal dumping down there when the dumpster becomes overloaded, and then people just throw it on the ground, throw it in the recycling bin. I mean, it's called, I think that's part of the problem is having those two co-located right there. I don't really know what you need to do about it, unless you need to try to find an alternative site to put the recycling so that there's separation between public dumping area and the recycling. So, I think most of it falls back on the county. They expect the county to go down and clean up that area every time something happens, and it's continuously, practically every day of the week, there's something thrown out mattresses, off couches, chairs, all kinds of stuff thrown out there. And then everybody feels like it's the county's responsibility to remove that.
It's in my district, you know, you talking about the one that's down here?
Yes, sir.
I said we take it up. If they don't respect we trying to help them, let it just discontinue. Do they, somebody check it out later? Is that, put that in form of motion?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley to take up the recycling area there so we don't keep having conflict. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, we do things to try to help further, and we got to show them, I mean, they got to help us, too. We got, this thing got to work 50/50. If we don't put it there, they can just go and throw everything in it, so. Let's just wait till it cool down a little bit, and maybe we'll have to find another site or something. Be looking for another site, I guess. By the city having they dumped it there, that's gonna continue, so. It's a, I saw it, it's right downtown, it shouldn't be.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Is there any property that we own inside the city that we could put it on instead of having it at the city side?
We, no, we own a piece right down there by, right by that, uh, that big tower there?
Mm-hmm.
We got a big piece of land there. We got a piece of land there, but it rolled up. But if the city got it dumpstered, it's gonna be the same thing. I mean, you got to separate it, I guess, at showing that one is for recycling and one is for, for the businesses.
I know, Mr. Lockley, you don't really want to do that, but we've had to do it in the eastern part of the county and a couple of the areas, so, you know, maybe it'll, it'll help it get better by doing that.
Yeah, I don't want to do it, but, you know, they, they forcing us, they forcing my hand. I want town to look good.
Any other Commissioner comments? We do have a motion and second on the floor?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The next thing come up to me this morning, football season's getting ready to kick off. We have, I have ordered some pads, but come to find out it's other items, other things that's gonna be needed. And Mr. Darren Turner, as I know, he had come up to me, which is, some of the things he named was the fence at the football field in Carabelle, the inside fence, which we took up to get the saw and irrigation and the elevation right, but we gonna replace it. But I think he's wanting more fence, right along with the announcer stand, shoulder pads and coaches, but if you could, let him come up and explain to us. Mr. Darren Turner.
Morning. I'm Darren Turner, East Point Little League, Franklin County Little League. What he's talking about is, on our football field, we have nothing. All we have is two goalposts and a concession stand. We have no way for announcers, no for the scorekeeper to be. Last year, our scorekeeper had to be up under the scoring pylons to keep the score, and the referees had to keep running back and forth to tell them when to stop the clock and everything. So, what they was looking for is nothing else, just a platform that people could stand on to run the clock and everything to where they could see, where referees don't have to run back and forth, is what he was talking about on that. We sat down yesterday and went through all of our shoulder pads. All of our shoulder pads are at least two years out of date. We have some that's 10 years out of date that we played with last year. Fonda ordered us 50 sets of shoulder pads. We're here today to ask for 35 more sets of shoulder pads and pants to get everything up to snuff, because you know how plastic is. When it gets old and break, it'll break. I don't want to get no kids hurt, you know? That's the last thing any of us wants to do is get a kid hurt, especially six-year-old kids, you know? So, we would like for y'all to see if y'all can see your way to get us 35 extra sets of shoulder pads and 35 pants, because we have some kids that's not three foot tall. Y'all would be surprised if y'all seen my team this year, how small they are. They're little bitty fellers.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Fonda, you have the money in there to do that?
Well, Commissioner, I have to go back and look at my youth support. I checked when we first got the order for the 50 pair of shoulder pads and like 20 pair pants.
I think it was 50 shoulder pads and 50 pants, wasn't it? Somewhere along in there, something like that.
Make a motion. If you got the money, go ahead and get them for the kids where they can play.
Mr. Chairman, the point of order, under your new policy, the board will have to first make the decision whether this is an item that you want to amend your agenda and add this. It's not, it was not part of Fonda's report, is my understanding. So, the first decision the board have to make is you want, whether or not to amend the agenda and take up this item for discussion now or at a future meeting. If you do want to take it up today, then you'd have to call for a public comment before you take action on this matter.
Okay. See, our problem is we start football practice next Monday, and if we wait till the next meeting, we will actually be in games before we ever get pads. You know, we didn't realize this until yesterday.
Mr. Chairman?
We apologize for everything getting dumped on you.
Hold on, Darren. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the agenda to bring this item before the board so we can go ahead and make a decision. And Mr. Schuler, Mr. Chairman, whoever, Michael Marone, whoever, need to get with our department head and explain to them how we're gonna be doing this.
Second.
Okay?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders to amend the agenda. We have a second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. We now must ask for public comment. You just have a seat right there, Mr. Turner. You can just stay up front there. We asking for public comment on this issue. Any public comment? Raise your hand, be recognized. State your name for the record. There being no public comment, you can get back up, Mr. Turner. Pleasure of the board.
Some move?
Second. Your motion is to recommend that Fonda, if he has the money available, to go ahead and process this?
Process the uniforms and the pads, the pants and the pads.
And that is intention of your second, Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah. They got, that new, some of that stuff they don't even use no more.
Right.
They got a new system out there, right?
Right.
I would like to, I don't know how to do this, but we need blocking dummies and stuff, and they, some in Carabelle, from the old Carabelle High School, some in Appalachia, from the old Appalachia High School. How would we go about trying to get them pads to where we would actually have some? Because we have nothing right now. We started from scratch last year.
Those should belong to the cities, correct? The cities own those two entities, right? The old Carabelle High School and the old Appalachia High School?
Yes, yeah.
The contents would be, still be the cities instead of county?
I would think so.
Are them the city's pads he's talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, blocking pads.
Did that belong to the city?
The city, uh, you have some blocking pads?
We have nothing.
We have nothing. In the pads, we have ordered that stuff, but it's, you know, it's got old and for whatever reason misplaced. But I just need to make it clear that the reason why this stuff is not kept up with, part of your football is not under the counties anymore, so it's separate. I mean, that's something maybe, you know, if it had have been, we could have kept ours, and we wouldn't be this today. But we do not have the blocking dummies. That's something we used to have.
Where did you see them at, Mr. Turner?
I know, when I coached high school football in Carabelle, we had new ones bought the last year that we had Carabelle High School. I don't know if they're any good or not. You know, it's been so long. But it's something to check into. It may save the county some money, or may save us some money.
Well, I'll look after tomorrow and see if we got them. If we do, we can put some padding on them, you know, put some, you take some foam and put on them, yeah.
Yeah. We just, we trying to save the county some money, trying to save us some money, you know, because next year, all these new helmets we bought last year has got to be sent back and be recertified because of the new-
The new helmet law.
New protocol, concussion protocols.
Every two years.
Well, I'll look tomorrow, if I was there, I'll get it for you and get through to the Commissioner and the mayor, and get that one.
Right. You know, that's why we trying to get all of this done this year, because it's no telling what it's gonna cost to have all these helmets redone next year, you know? Because some of the bladders in them's probably gonna be busted, you know, it's gonna have to be replaced, or some of the helmets itself may not be no good next year. You know, that's why you have to send them in. High school has to do the same thing. Every two years, everything has to be sent in. That's just a heads up for next year. I don't know if y'all want us to come before y'all in February or March to where you can, you know, we can talk about putting in a budget or us kicking in some money to help y'all do this, or, because the last thing anybody wants to do is have a kid hurt, you know?
We do have a motion and a second on the floor to rate and parts and rate to look at the issue. Any further discussion?
I don't know what some of the other items, Commissioner, you need to go ahead and look at.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and take care of that after we do this motion right here.
Okay, okay.
Any discussion on the motion at hand? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, the football field at Kendrick Park in Carabelle is supposed to be a fully, fully functional facility?
Mm-hmm.
Fonda, give it functional.
Okay.
To where you can call the games, people can sit there and watch it, concession stand, all that, because that's what it's supposed to be. That's what that grant was for many, many years ago. So, I make that motion, I make that motion that we put the football slash soccer field at Carabelle, Kendrick Park Sports Complex, fully functional, to where the kids can use it.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I have something.
Yes.
Fonda, can we also look at the, putting gates on either end so there's only one entrance, one exit? People can't skirt the money they are taking up for people to enter. They can't just enter and, you know, having problems, because right now there's three openings.
Okay.
So, we need to just have one open in the middle where they're selling the tickets, two on the ends where they put gates on or something, where they can be locked when they don't need to be used, please, sir.
How many fields you got, Fonda?
I have no idea, Commissioner. Mr. Turner, make an announcement that they have a registration now.
No. How many fields y'all got?
How many football fields?
Oh, you say field? I thought you said kids.
Field, we have one, we have one field. That's in Carabelle. We have, we have no, no place for, people even see it. They take everything from the baseball field to the football field. They just keep swapping it back and forth.
How many field we got?
Fields?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kendrick Field is one, that's it. We just have one at Kendrick, that they play the, we don't have one at, here at DW, nor at Boomin.
Where the, all the games gonna be played in Carabelle?
Yes.
Where they gonna practice?
It's been practicing in East Point, is it?
Yesterday, we having a three-day mini-kempt right now. We practiced in Carabelle at the football field, because we've been, last year, we practiced at the high school. And due to insurance and stuff like that, the high school's not wanting us to practice out there right now until all of that gets worked out. So, we've been practicing at the Carabelle Football Field. Next week, when we start practicing, it's probably still gonna be at the Carabelle Football Field, because we have nowhere else to go. Soccer's gonna be taking baseball fields at Boomin Park, or they did, they did last year. So, that, that pretty much kills, East Point have a place to, to practice unless we go out beside the jail.
Appalachia got team where they practice?
Could be traveling to Carabelle.
They don't, they travel to Carabelle.
What we would like to see is someplace to practice in East Point, someplace to practice in Appalachia, to where we can rotate days, where people just don't have to drive. It's not fair from one end of the county to have to drive to the other end of the county three days a week, you know? So, what we would like to see is have it staggered out to where everybody's got to drive. You know, I don't know how we would do it, because places to practice is hard to come by. You know, we looked at practicing beside the jail, that big open field, but I don't know if the county or the Sheriff's Department would let us do it with a bunch of kids right there with inmates there. You know, that's something we trying to check into.
So, Mr. Turner, the school, does it need the insurance?
Yes.
We provided last year?
Yes, same, same as last year.
Okay.
That's why we're having to practice everything right now at the football field we have in Carabelle.
We can check into the insurance and get with the school and see if they, we can make that happen again this year, where they have a central location.
I appreciate you having them kids.
Hey, I love the kids. The older I get, seems like the more I enjoy it.
I agree with that.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
What else you got, bud?
We had coaches on, I understand. Coaches on your list, Mr. Turner? Coaches.
Coaches? Right now, we have, I coach, I'm the head coach of the six, seven, and eight-year-olds, and the nine and 10-year-olds is, I don't know the man's name, but he works for you, Fonda?
Kenny Griswold?
No. Uh...
He coaches?
His name is that?
Yeah.
No. What I tell you?
He coaches?
Yes, I think he's, I think he's planning on coaching.
Okay. Maybe Scott.
And then Reed Howard is one of the, is the coach for the Pee Wee Team.
Yeah, Scott and Reed, so it's supposed to be doing it.
Okay.
And then, if anybody else would like to come help coach, they're more than welcome, because right now, we need coaches. I have two people helping me. Some of them, it's just by themselves, you know? Because the way we try to do it is do a background check, because we don't want no, every time they can hear you out there, that's, don't need to be out there, you know, sir? If anybody wants to come help coach or watch or whatever, more than welcome to. Be proud to have you.
What else you got, Fonda?
That's it.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Davis this morning, any of the Commissioners? Thank you, Fonda.
All right, thank you.
Next will be Ms. Pam Brunel, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sorry about having to give you the handout this morning. We were busy in to get our report in. I do not have any action items this morning, but I would like to clarify one thing. In this special meeting we had the other day- In this special meeting we had the other day, um, I was talking about, I understand why the Red Cross no longer does volunteers and donations after seeing, being at the Carabel Center and seeing the amount of stuff that is donated up over there. It's just overwhelming to look at the outpour of stuff that is donated.
Any, any, anything from the board, Mr. Brunel? We, we do need to get these reports in on time because of the, uh, public comment period.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's been directed to get this stuff in on Thursday, where it can be sent to the commissioners and the public on Friday, and we need to comply with that.
Yes, sir.
So when you get busy, you're just gonna have to take time to do your report and get it in where we can get it out to the public in order to comply with our public comment period.
I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Pam emailed me yesterday, I got an email that, uh, someone about paying some bills.
Oh, you threw me off there for a minute, yes, sir.
Commissioner Massey?
I think they're handling that.
I, I'm going to be taking that item up.
Oh, okay.
On my report.
Okay.
Any, any other comments from Mr. Brunel? Thank you, Pam. Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestring, extension office director.
Morning Commissioners. I just had one item in my report that I wanted to discuss with you briefly. And it relates to, um, my request during our budget workshops for, uh, vehicle support for the extension program. I know county staff had started doing a little research regarding that and some options. But since then, my district extension director just recently called me and said that he was at the point where he was going to be able to replace his current university vehicle. And he was interested in donating that to the county extension program here in Franklin County. It would involve a title transfer and picking up that vehicle on the county's insurance policy. I do have enough budget to be able to support that and just routine maintenance for a vehicle. Um, it's a 2012 Ford Escape, um, about eighty-nine thousand miles and been very well-maintained by the fleet maintenance from the university. So I am very interested in doing that if that would be, um, approved by the board.
Pleasure, the board.
I say that let's table this until this item, until staff can get with clerk's office about the insurance and the title change and all that, then come back and report to us at the next board meeting.
Commissioners, I did talk to Erin a little bit about it, so she's aware.
Do what?
I did speak with Erin about that and what the requirements would be.
We need to, we need to get our staff-
Yes, ma'am.
Report to us, not to me. Okay. Mr. Ma, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this item until Michael Marrom can get with finance and come back with the answer from finance to this board.
Sir?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Locking, any further discussion?
Yeah, why you need a car so much, bad or, Eric?
Well, right now I'm utilizing my personal vehicle and just adding a lot of mileage to that and, um, it would be nice to have a, an extension vehicle with a logo on the side for the county that is recognized when I'm out in the county doing business as well as just saving my personal vehicle.
Well, see, a, a lot of them don't have vehicles. Don't have my cag in here. A lot of, a lot of other people who work like you, they don't have vehicles needed. We'll, we'll see.
That's the reason why I made a motion to table it, Mr. Chairman.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries? We'll, we'll take it up at the next meeting, Eric.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Lisa Lance, library director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, y'all have my report, I just want to emphasize, uh, one of our, uh, programs that we want to make everyone aware of. Uh, today, uh, on our regular scheduled calendar, we have at the East Point Branch, we will have the garden program with the topic of brash bugs and wicked weeds. Um, Les Stevens, Les Harrison, who is with the Waco Extension Office, who does our monthly garden programs, has also extended to us the opportunity to have the master garden program for Franklin County. We've tried to do this in the past, but could not get enough people to sign up. Um, so I, if you have questions about that, um, today would be a great opportunity to be at the garden program to find out the answers to your questions. We have packets and applications at the East Point and the Carabel location. We do have to have a minimum of ten committed people, uh, for the master garden program. Um, it is a lengthy program, there is a, a small, uh, cost associated with it. But the registration for deadline is Friday, August thirty-first. So we would ask it, uh, anyone, we have, I've almost, I think we have nine people signed up, so we're very close to this year, achieving the goal of getting the minimum of ten to have this program. All the, um, program, the program will be held at the East Point Library, they'll use the property there, uh, and do the classes there. But Les can give a whole lot more information today, so I encourage everyone to come to the, uh, garden program. Um, the only other thing that's not on my report, of course, we will be closed, uh, Labor Day Monday, uh, September third for both libraries. But I'm also closing, uh, the Carabel Branch, we're only open ten to two on that Saturday of Labor Day weekend, so I'm closing that branch, uh, just for that weekend. Uh, but everything else is on my report. We do have upcoming, starting back September sixth is all of our children's programs. Uh, we have some new programs, uh, starting, uh, at Carabel, we're starting a new STEAM program from ages eight to fourteen. Uh, that will be at four o'clock every Thursday, starting September sixth. Uh, we do have new hours for our programs at the East Point Branch. We have, uh, a new anime club that's gonna be meeting on the second Wednesday of every month. And that will be at four o'clock, our teen book club that starts back, uh, September fifth will be at four o'clock, and our STEAM program, uh, will start again, uh, at the East Point Branch. So we, uh, have a lot of activities for the kids, a lot of, uh, informative and fun learning adventures for them. And that's all I have.
I have-
Go ahead.
Are we hiring?
Yes, sir.
How many, I had twenty-one applications, right?
Yes, sir.
How many of the Franklin County applications did you pick the girls you call in? There was thirteen of them, was eleven or thirteen?
I didn't interview anybody outside the county except for two.
Did you interview all the applications?
No, sir, I did not. Because some did not meet the qualifications that we were looking for. Is why I did not.
What was the quali, the qualification?
Well, some were out of, out of state and I was directed to, uh, stay within the area, but some had the qualifications, is why I did interview for those that was outside of the county, uh, but elected not to, uh, extend the offer to them. We have the, uh, offer extended to two local individuals within Carabel, we're waiting on the drug test results. Uh, they are both within the Franklin County and local. East Point, I'm still verifying references, but they are a local candidate as well.
Yeah, because one of these candidates just moved here into Franklin County, hadn't been here two or three months, four months. Because I was kind of, you know, wanting local people to try to get these jobs, because they need the jobs here bad in Franklin County.
Yes, sir.
And I'd asked you about that.
Yes, sir.
And the girls didn't get interviewed, they told me that they didn't get called or not, called in or nothing.
I did extend emails to those when we converted to the, to the two part-time positions and was advised that, you know, they, they preferred full-time, and they had just received a full-time position.
That's what they told you?
Yes, it was on their application.
Yeah, but they-
And, and in the emails, they said that they needed full-time.
All right, I'll check back with them.
So for our coverage, we, uh, did go back to the structure from last fall that I had converted to. So we still have a full-time position in Carabel, and then we'll have the two part-time positions that we will be able to meet the community needs with our, with flexibility for six-day coverage.
It just bothers me, you know, the local people needs the jobs. And one, one of them you hired, she's retired and on social security, and just the local people needing a job, you know?
Well, she was qualified. She has experience with working with children, as a media specialist, as a former librarian as well. So I also have to look at their credentials for qualifications.
All right, some of them other applications I looked at, there've been, some of them is qualified too.
By application, they probably all were, but by the credentials and what we were looking for and for our need within the library system, I selected who I felt was the best candidate for our positions. I did stay local. They are residents, they are bringing revenue to the community.
Mr. Chairman, we're about to hire one in East Point too, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I'm still, I'm doing reference checks right now.
Okay.
Any other comments from Ms. Lance? Thanks for coming in this morning.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Jason Puckett, airport manager.
I'm sorry, Commissioners. Uh, Mr. Puckett has been deferred to the next meeting because AFCON and some of the other people are gonna come back to talk to you about that economic project that's going on out there.
That Centric group?
Uh, not necessarily, Centric, that's the FBL, may, maybe them, but I know it's Jason, and that, uh, uh-
I'd like to see them start doing something.
All right, I'll have them here too.
Yeah.
Make sure they're here the next meeting.
I want to start seeing something go over that airport, we've sunk in a lot of money at that airport.
Okay.
We need to have some good stuff that going on out there.
That's right, they ain't, they ain't doing nothing but, they ain't doing nothing but few people making the money, talking about plan, making plans, making plans, they didn't plan it for-
See them playing.
They've been planning it for thirty years.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. DeWitt Polus, mosquito control.
Directed to, to come this morning to talk to you about a, uh, part-time helper, the remainder of the season. And, uh, I had gave some handouts this morning on the, uh, what it would cost me. Uh, there's a couple of ways we could go. We could, uh, advertise for a couple of weeks and then, you know, hire somebody and get them at the eleven dollars an hour rate that I pay my part-time drivers. Or being such a short timeframe that we have, we could, uh, we could hire somebody that, that had, I've utilized in the past. So they work at the landfill during the day and they could, you know, could drive a truck at night. And, uh, this person is already trained, but I would have to pay them time and a half if it couldn't take them forty hours. But that's set in the, for discretion.
As the board can see, this, we, we discussed this, uh, at the last board meeting about, and we, we put in some more money in, uh, mosquito control for next year, which doesn't take effect October one. This is something that would get us through the rest of this year. And it's a pleasure of the board, uh, to put another man on another truck, we can spray more often and give, give better covers to the citizens. These mosquitoes are still bad, I got calls last night, had to call DeWitt, this and that, uh, but it is a pleasure of the board, this is just something he come up with, and this is what it would cost to get us through the rest of the fiscal year. So it is a pleasure of the board.
Same move.
Wait, wait just a minute, I want to ask some questions for you. Um, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, uh, DeWitt, which, which one, are, are you want, you want both the positions like that or just the one or what?
Uh, well, we approved the one for next year, part-time guy, so we have that in the budget for next year. This is just to finish out the season, one person.
The one person?
To, to finish out, to help us, because we just, it's been, you know, unusual season.
And, and you want us to make a determination on the first one or the second one?
Oh, well, I've got, I've got two, well, what I've got, two different sets of numbers here. One is to utilize this person two days a week.
Mm-hmm.
At, at the one rate, or I could use this person three days a week.
Which do you prefer, that's what I'm saying?
I, I prefer the three days.
I mean, I don't have no problem with it.
So what, what it is for three days is, is the biggest, you know, Appalachia Cola, Carabel, and St. George Island, those zones are hard for me to cover, even with two trucks. Yeah, I mean, I get a lot of complaints, you know, they're driving too fast and, and of course I go through that, that, you know, routine, that explain that it's variable flow and the faster they go up to a certain miles per hour, it, it adjusts its spray, the slower it goes.
And that is state rules.
That's right, that, that's state.
State laws.
But, uh, you know, I explain that.
Where the person, you're gonna put another truck on the road, is that what you're talking about?
Yep, I have this, uh, an older sprayer. And I'm gonna put it in the truck that I'm driving, and, and that person would come get that truck and use that.
And would you say you wanted us to take this out of?
Uh, oh, I didn't.
Yeah.
I won't even have the board to find that.
Hey, we gonna have to take it out of reserve if he doesn't have the money in his budget.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question, just a point of clarification. Mr. Polus, is this for eight weeks, so it can extend past October first and give you that two-week period of time that you'd be advertising for the job that you're gonna fill in the next year?
Right, if I advertise for two weeks.
Right.
Then you're looking at two weeks, then I have to put that person, this person I'm, I'm putting here now that I'm recommending is already trained, they've worked with me in the past.
I understand that.
Okay. The new, the, if we hired somebody, you know, just part-time off the street.
Right.
I won't have to advertise for two weeks. And it usually takes me about three to four weeks with them in a truck with somebody else, get them acclimated to the, you know, area.
I'm just clarifying the eight weeks, as to what it was.
The eight weeks.
Because from now to October first, it's six weeks, that's why I'm asking.
It's the end of October.
End of October?
End of October.
Okay. I thought our budget started October one.
That's your normal season, it's normally October thirtieth.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Whoever makes the motion have to directly get with finance, see where the money, where we can pull this money from. If, if, if the board so desires to, uh, go two days a week or three days a week, just depending on who makes the motion and what you want, what the board wants to do.
I'm making the motion to get the finances, go three days a week, because we need it right now.
So?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Yeah, or do we, if you go three days, will that cover the count?
Yes, sir, that, that would, that would help us tremendously. What that would do, it's free up one of the trucks, which would probably be Scott, full-time guy, to go hit a lot of the complaints. What, what we're doing now is I just don't have enough manpower to run the routes and then hit all the complaints, the hotspots throughout the county, and I'd like to be able to do that more. Also, but yeah, that, that three days a week could be a tremendous help.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, DeWitt.
Thank you.
Next would be request for call qualification, still be at Open, is RFQ for Personal Executive Administrative Services of Franklin County TDC.
Excuse me, our commissioners, you remember the last time we did this, we only had two. The board asked us to re-advertise, and, um, here we are, so now we have four submittals. I don't know if there's, oh, there is a sheet in front of you, thank you, Lori. Okay, so I'm gonna basically read out the name of the, of each person. This one came with, uh, flash drive, and this was submitted by Forgotten Coast Creative LLC. Uh, manager listed, they're from Appalachia Cola, and the manager listed is Cutler Edwards.
Appalachia Cola?
So was I, double checking the name, also Forgotten Coast Creative, this is Forgotten Coast Management Services Incorporated, also from Appalachia Cola. The third one is Dee Davis and Associates of Franklin County LLC, they're also from Appalachia Cola. And the manager there, the name that's in front of me, is Miss Deborah Davis. And finally, the fourth and final one is, uh, from the Appalachia Cola Bay Chamber of Commerce. Their president is Miss, Mrs. Donna Duncan, and the executive director is Mr. John Solomon.
That's it?
That's, I'm sorry, sir.
That's all?
That's it, that's the four, and I, I, I know the board had said that we were going to send them to TDC for review, and TDC would rank the top three and send them to you. I recommend since they're four, have all four come back to you, and I will set up interviews at that time, if the board so desires.
So you're saying TDC just rank all four of them and send it back?
Yep, and then at that time, excuse me, commissioners, I will set up interviews as we've done in the past, where you could, uh, one of your meetings, you're able to interview all four candidates out.
Well, what, we gonna make the, why they gotta be ranked and all that? I mean, we got four, four companies, we go, we gonna pick it. Why we only just interviewing people?
That's up to the board.
I'm at the board.
In the past, that's how we've always done it, isn't it? I mean, I say we, I wasn't here, but in the past, that's how we've always done it, as a board, right? Let TDC bring you all a recommendation or list the top ones. Just nobody knows?
Yes, there's not much in the past of this one, Commissioner, because it might be the second administrator we're hiring for TDC. My mistake.
Third?
My mistake.
In the last ten years, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Since two thousand and four.
Pleasure, the board.
That be the good, the good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, the board is certainly able to make it, a- The board's certainly able to make a, a different decision on how the process that you set up in place, but principally, the, the reason I had recommended that the TDC be the one to go through and, and make the review, and, and of course, your decision at that time was they send you the top three without any rankings, and you would do the interview and the selection, but if you don't send this to the TDC, then the county commission is the one that's going to have to review these submittals and make sure that all the checks on the box have been, have been checked off properly, and I, I, I had intended for the TDC to do that type of labor on your behalf, but certainly, if the board wants to do it, you can, but it, it just has to be done by someone in addition to the interview. So, I just want to get that point of clarification out there.
I can tell you, it's a process, it is a process to, to go in there because of the way the administration contracts or the bids and all of that was, was made up for this year, uh, just like the vendors' contract, there was added, stuff added to it, and I feel, you know, if anyway this board wants to, I'm just one, one vote up here. Um, but I feel like it would be a disservice to this board if you don't have the TDC at least look at them and see if they meet the criteria for what the, the application was supposed to be for.
I agree.
Yeah.
Well, my thing is this, uh... We got one of them working with the TDC now, putting in for this, right?
That's why we're standing, yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, she doesn't, she doesn't work, hey, hey, Mr. Noah, she doesn't work for, for TDC, she works for Mr. Blair.
I know, but... Well, to keep it from people thinking they get, she getting the edge, how about, y'all, they look over the contract and, and don't rate nobody.
That's right, that's right.
So would you say they don't?
That's what I was saying, look over the contract to make, to make sure it meets what it's supposed to have in there, because there's some, there's some stuff in there that, that the attorney, uh, made sure that these people are gonna have to comply with, that, that have never had to comply with before. So we need, TDC board needs to look to make sure that they have complied with that. So if you don't want the TDC board to rank it, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the TDC board needs to make sure that they have met all the criteria to qualify them to even come to this board.
I'm fine with that.
See what I'm saying?
Good point.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I make a motion, um, to go ahead and send this out to the TDC and not have them rank, but just come back to the board, but just to meet, make sure that they meet the qualifications that we're requesting.
And that is to return all four, if all four are...
All four of them, yeah.
So...
We have a motion on floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed, the motion carries?
Could you take a break, Commissioners, I'll get set up for KNC.
Board recess for five minutes.
Thank you.